Good evening and welcome to this regular session of the Grant County Council. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Hicks, if you would stand.
I'd like to pray with me. God forgive me tonight, I'm not feeling too great, got a nice side of headaches, so forgive me that this is short and sweet. But God, we just appreciate you giving us breath to be here and do the people's business. Just bless our efforts tonight. Bless everyone that serves the people. It's in Jesus' name I pray for his sake. I'm in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Perez.
Perez did mention that he would not be here this evening. Family issue.
Polling.
And Mr. Polling did mention that he was under the weather as well.
Lemming.
Here.
Middlesworth.
Here. We do have a form. Thank you. Next item is the auditor's report.
Again, I've provided the health insurance balance along with your general fund balance. If you guys have any questions about the financials.
Are there any questions for the auditor? There's no questions, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The first minutes for approval will be the regular session of August the 14th, which was the meeting that we did not have a form on. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Hicks to approve the regular session of August the 14th minutes as presented. Are there any other questions from the members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We'll move to the budget hearing minutes from August the 21st, 22nd, 28th, and 29th. Are there any questions or corrections that need to be addressed in those minutes? There's no questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve the budget hearing minutes as prepared.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the Grant County Council budget hearing minutes for August the 21st, 22nd, 28th, and 29th. Are there any other questions from the members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I am staying as to the meeting time last week. I believe it was August 28th. I can't, I'm trying to determine if I missed any of those things. You have to notice outside, sorry. Anyway, I'm staying as to the meeting time last week.
So with the exemptions from the meetings he missed, we still, they still be approved? Okay, those meeting minutes are approved. And then we have the regular session minutes from September the 18th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? One thing I would see. There's an A for our Grant County. Swipe that off. There's no other corrections to the minutes, I'd entertain a motion.
You can say it.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the Grant County Council regular session minutes from September the 18th, noting the A and before Grant County. Scratch it off. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll move on to new business this evening. Item C, Mr. McLean asks to be removed from the agenda, and Mr. Stewart, Commissioner Stewart, asks to be moved up on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and we'll start with some old business first. Grant County Commissioner Ron Stewart with ARPA discussion.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen. What do you want to do first, Mr. President? Do we want to...
You want to do the transfers? That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Let's do the transfers first.
All right. Yeah, so as you gentlemen can see, we're requesting a transfer of $5,000 to overtime. That is mainly from what I've been told, that's mainly maintenance. Just a lot of maintenance departments being called into jail for, and then obviously it's time and a half, and the minimum that they, you know, they're there 45 minutes, as you know, you know, they get paid for two hours, so that will cover through the end of the year, the, we're taking $5,000. Vehicle insurance of $80,000. I'm talking to Justin, I guess, that was just kind of misbudgeted a little bit, so we're requesting $80,000 for vehicle insurance. And then two $5,000 transfers to the animal shelter, and again, that will get us through the end of the year as well.
Are there any questions regarding the commissioner's request for the transfers? Angie, I believe all the transfers this evening are acceptable?
Yes.
Correct. If there's no other questions or comments from the members, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the transfers within the Grant County Commissioner's budget. Social Care Medicare to overtime in the amount of $5,000. Perf to vehicle insurance in the amount of $80,000. EDC legal to the animal shelter in the amount of $5,000, and soldier burial to the animal shelter in the amount of $5,000. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input. If you're Republican, you want to add your input, come to the podium, state your name, your address, and allow you to speak. There's no public input, roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion carries, yep. And so we'll move on to now the ARPA discussion.
So again, as you can see, what we're asking for tonight is for your approval is $150,000 for the chiller rental, $1 million for the highway equipment, which you guys have Exhibit A, so what we would, what the plan is on that is approving $1 million for Highway Superintendent White to basically kind of pick what he wants to spend that money on. So you should have Exhibit A there, those are kind of the list. It comes up to 2.5, $2,585,000, but again, we're approving $1 million for issues. $1,163,281.24, and that would be for radio equipment for the sheriff's office, EMA, EMS, central dispatch, and highway. $87,127.92 to repair the elevator at the Salem Bank Building. We would like to rescind the $600,000 request for the boiler-chiller project at the detention center. And as you know, Mr. President, we'll be coming back to you next month for kind of talk about that, what we're doing with that, so a little bit of a bigger ask for the detention home. And then also the detention center there, so also $650,000, $50,000 to each township and county to be used for communications equipment for their respective volunteer fire departments, and that will be overseen by Mr. Jackson and Mr. Hicks. And Mr. Jackson put together a kind of memo as to how he will, how they'll go about overseeing those funds, so.
Which I believe the members received memo last month, or...
I believe so, yeah. So that's our, that's our ask this evening.
Are there any questions from the members?
Yeah, Mr. Stewart, you, I sent out a copy of Pam Harris' impassioned email about reconsidering some ARPA funds for her request on her preservation or digitizing of records. Any way we can revisit that, have some consideration, especially with the chiller?
Yeah, Mr. Connor, it's one of those things where it's definitely needed, and off the top of my head, was it like two and a half million? Is that what the project, is that what the project was, or am I...
I can't remember.
I can't remember. We just kind of felt that as of right now, that was kind of a, there's a lot of work for the ask, and Mr. Middlesworth and I talked a little bit about the need for a, oh, what do we, what do we, like a record center, like building possibly, looking into, you know, 2025, looking into the possibility of building some kind of record center. It's not going to, it's not going to fix what Mrs. Harris is asking for, but we're acknowledging the need, we just feel like it was just a little bit too big of a price tag this time.
Would she be, would it be appropriate for her to approach the commissioners again just to talk a little more about it, give her another...
I think we've kind of already got a plan, Mr. Connor, as to what we're doing with the, with the ARPA money. Again, it was, I met with Mr. Middlesworth and Mr. Polling, our auditor was in the meeting, Mr. Hicks as well, and I think we got a plan for the ARPA money, and unfortunately, it does not, it does not help out Mrs. Harris' request.
Would you use a part of this meeting, the current question, you was on the committee for the current request?
On the chiller, the, I'm sorry, were you...
Oh, yes.
The chiller that you were, you were talking about rentals, we purchased a chiller, we get to receive it, correct?
Yes, yes, so this, this chiller here, we're renting it, and it runs out, this contract runs out in the beginning, in the middle of November, so...
Do we know when we're going to get the actual chiller, so we're not paying for rental?
Do you know when that is?
I know that it's due any day.
Yeah.
They actually had a delivered date, I believe.
Right, yep.
So I'm kind of to the same point, I'm not sure why we're paying to rent it if they couldn't deliver the product.
Yes.
And we were upfront of money.
This run, this kind, this runs out in the middle of November. Amberesco has, we have, it runs out, the contract runs out in the middle of November, we're going to have the chiller until December 1st, to keep me honest on this, but Amberesco's going to pick up the tab the past two weeks, and then, we're hoping by that time, the new one will be in.
So this is a month? Is that about, the 150 is currently about a month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a plan for this?
Come in? The 150 is for like six months. I don't know what your question is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's for about six months, and that contract, yeah, that runs out in middle of November.
If it doesn't come in by chance, is Amberesco going to expect us to pick up the tab at that point?
Well, that's, that's definitely a good question. I don't have the answer for you, but we'll definitely, we'll definitely hold accountable to that. Seems to be a high level of confidence that there should be no issues.
I'm hearing the same. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? And this hall has been advertised, correct?
Yes, it has.
Okay. We didn't advertise anything at the last commissioner's meeting that was approved, correct?
Yeah, it wasn't advertised until, yeah.
There's no questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the commissioner's request for the additional ARPA funds, $150,000 to be toward the chiller rental, $1 million to the highway to use on equipment, which is Exhibit A. Exhibit A is roll-off trucks and dumpsters, oil distributor, full-width chipper box, 29 tire rollers, extra-large, 3100 grade all, large excavator, grader, mower max, mini excavator. Those are the items these could purchase with those funds. And then $87,127.92 to the elevator repair, $1,163,281.24 for equipment, for radio equipment for the sheriff's office, EMA, EMS, central dispatch, and highway. And then $650,050 to each township to be used for communication equipment, and Bob Jackson and Mr. Hicks being the facilitator, noting Bob Jackson's memo regarding that request. I get everything? Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. So we'll see you next month, I guess, for the...
Next month, yeah, we'll come before you, we've got a, we've got a plan for to finalize the, all the ARPA money, so. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Continue, too.
And since Mr. Connor's under the weather, he may be leaving early, we'll go ahead and move the adoption of the 2025 budget up next.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That way we can go ahead, in case you have to leave, go ahead and get this signed for the record. So before you this evening, you have an ordinance or resolution for appropriations and the tax rate, it has a balloon line underneath of it. So be it ordained or resolved by the Grant County Council that for the expenses of Grant County for the year ending December 31st, 2025, the sums herein specify are hereby appropriated and ordered to set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purpose herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Grant County, the property tax levies and property tax rates are herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and is subject and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its passage and approval by the Grant County Council. So we'll go through the funds, the general fund, the adopted budget is $31,702,665. The adopted tax levy is $16,600,000 with the adopted tax rate of .6954. The 2015 reassessment fund, the adopted budget is $577,660. The adopted tax levy is $697,000 with the adopted tax rate of .0292. The debt service fund, the adopted budget is $685,453. The adopted tax levy is $975,500 with the adopted tax rate of .0409. The highway fund, the adopted budget is $4,248,239. There's no levy, there's no adopted rate. Local road and street, the adopted budget is $600,000. Again, being the highway fund, there's no adopted levy or rate. Cumulative bridge fund, the adopted budget is 1.2 million. The adopted tax levy is $1,919,600 with the adopted rate of .0804. The health insurance fund, I mean, sorry, the health, the health fund, the adopted budget $422,742. The adopted tax levy $590,000 with the adopted tax rate of .0247. The cumulative capital development fund, the adopted budget is $430,000. The adopted tax levy is $581,000 with the rate at .0243. The economic development income tax credit fund, the adopted budget $1,800,000 with no adopted tax levy or tax rate. So the total of those funds, the adopted budget is $41,666,759 with the adopted tax levy of $21,363,100 with the adopted tax rate of .8949. Mr. Record, being our budget, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think you guys went through the process as you need to, and obviously, it's important to note that the adopted tax levy amounts that are shown on the schedule are high, they're going to be lower than that when it's all said and done by a good chunk. Same with the rates, the rates will be lower than that too when it's all said and done because we've used a conservative AV to show that, so it'll be better than this looks when it's all finished.
Adam Aldrich, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
The only thing I need you to do is to assign your resolution number.
Do we have a number? There's no other questions, I entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to adopt the ordinance/resolution number one, 2024, as presented. Any questions or comments? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Budget is adopted.
Just one comment, you know, this covers the funds the DLGF will review, you also want to adopt all the other funds that you've acted on as well, are you going to do that in a separate action, or, because you've approved budgets for all other funds as well, so.
You just want to do that?
Which all that information is in that packet, I think.
Okay. I'd assume that covers all the funds, then?
All the funds.
Funds.
You have a lot of funds that the DLGF, you know, they won't review, it's not part of the resolution, it's here.
Do we need a motion to cover those?
Yeah, let's go ahead and cover them.
Well, my thought is you should unless you want to include all that in your prior motion. What you did, you included Resolution One, is what you did, so I would say another motion.
Yeah, we probably need another motion.
To cover all the other miscellaneous funds that you've gone through the process with.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to cover additional funds and discussions we have during our meeting, let's not, let's not do this category. That would be needed.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to approve all the funds outside of the ordinance resolution that we approved during our budget adoption process. Are there any other questions or comments from the members?
Just a reminder, when I have a legal document to sign, if you could make it Michael D. Connor, because that's how I legally sign things, it doesn't affect the legality, it's just, that's literally how I sign all legal documents.
If there's no questions or comments, public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. So the salary ordinance will be next month for adoption. All right, we've done our job, now we go home. Okay, we'll move back to new business, the first item under new business, Grant County Health Department, Terrace Street with Preparedness Grant Fund request. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I typically bring this to you much earlier in the year. The CDC sent it out to the state early in the year, we received it in June, and before we could even get it signed or presented to anybody, they realized they had made a mistake, so they pulled it back, just got it to us. I'm presenting it to the commissioners on Monday, but I'm asking for you to go ahead and approve the budget this evening, pending commissioner approval on Monday to accept the grant. This is the same grant we've been receiving since 2003, it covers our preparedness coordinator, allowing us to be prepared for any public health emergency or public health care emergencies. The grant is for $25,000. I'm asking that you appropriate $23,087 for salary and $1,913 for the FICA.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? And you want to make it retroactive, right?
Yes, that was going to be my second. Yes, he continued working, he hasn't been paid since, in June, but has continued to work and need to deliver the whole, what's the second of the positioning? So I would like to retroact his payback to July 1st.
Make a motion to approve the request with retroactive.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the preparedness grant, noting the $23,087 to salaries, $1,913 to FICA, pending commissioner approval, and making it retroactive to July 1st, 2024. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Connor.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middleworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item before is the CV, Grant County Assessor, Rhonda Wiley with PTO Board Appointments.
Yeah, but I think you guys are going to advertise it, I thought maybe you might have some questions or something.
Yeah, I just caught that, so sorry about that.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Tell them we get it down before the two second.
Okay, go, if you would, just go ahead and present what you was going to present.
These are the, we have five three-year-old members every year that come in and do. The PTO is a property tax board, or property tax assessment board of the PTO. And they are affiliated between us and the tax, we can come to and agree. And we try to find people that have knowledge of real estate. We have two people that's not certified level three, and Elizabeth Wright and Richard Cox. And they are, one's a farmer, one's been in real estate pretty much throughout her adult life.
Yeah, Liz is a, she's a three?
No, she is, she is not, no, she's never taken the level certifications.
Okay.
But Kelly Rock, well, she's on the Commissioner, like, she's the only one.
Oh, Kelly Rock, yeah.
Yeah, she's the only one that's new.
Okay. Yeah, so the request is to, for the council's appointment, as you can see on the. Yeah, to reappoint Chad Roots as level three certification and then Elizabeth Wright. You know, past practice that this body has been advertising our appointments. I think we need to keep in that same statue, I guess. We just go ahead and advertise them. When is the deadline for the paper?
Sure, as long as we have it, I.
It'll be advertised at the same time. I'll get with Rhonda and get those dates.
Okay, so yeah, we'll get the dates.
Because I can, I can get with David to get the legal ad ready and possibly get it out next week.
Sure. Yeah, so as long as we can get the legal ad.
This one's a little more complicated because they have to have.
They do have to.
Well, on each council, each council has to have a level two or a level three on it. So the Commissioners have to have one, and you guys have to have one. So, yeah, those are very hard and futile. Because they're all assessors and you can't.
Yeah.
You can't use it.
Can't fake that, can you, Rhonda?
No.
We just want to make sure that, you know, this body's given opportunity to appoint, to appointments and it's just not the same.
I totally understand, yeah.
And so that advertise it, if there's anyone out there that's willing to serve, they could.
They can look at it, yes.
And so I think we should stay in that same practice. And so we'll just put it on next month's agenda. I appreciate it. Is that all we have? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that could get tough, right? I mean. Next item under new business, item D, Grant County Waits and Measures, Mark Fleming with the Transfer of Appropriation. I did not receive any communication from him, is he online?
He is under my.
Oh, is it? I had, oh, it is, so we only have to suspend the rules for that. So his request is to transfer from vehicle repair and maintenance to the maintenance account? Or maintenance to Waits and Measures Repair. They both maintenance accounts.
One's the vehicle repair and maintenance, the other one is.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request, as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve Waits and Measures' request, the transfer in the amount of two hundred dollars from vehicle to maintenance account. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Leonard.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middleworth.
Yes, motion carries. Next item under new business, Grant County Sheriff Dell Garcia with the Transfer of Appropriation regarding the General Fund. He's got two, I believe, but.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Excuse me, I can't talk real well, I'm just getting over. So, we are asking for a transfer of funds from the Allen County Housing Account, sixty thousand dollars to the Garage and Motors. Garage and Motors kind of took a hit this year. We had to purchase another transport van. And in doing so, the Commissioner, kind of to purchase the van, we had to outfit it for transport. I've got some pictures here, two vans that we use for transport. Our transports have been up, have been going up. Just for the month of September, we transported a hundred and fifty-three inmates, fifty-five to court order, twelve to DOC, twenty to the hospital, eleven to jails, juveniles, transported thirty-two to Tipton County, twenty-one to Fulton County. So from May twenty-third to twenty twenty-three until this month, we have transported one thousand six hundred and eighty-three inmates. We've also had an increase in transport mileage. In twenty twenty-three, our average monthly mileage is five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. This year it's been seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. Our total transport mileage for twenty twenty-three was sixty-seven thousand, nine eighty-nine. For twenty twenty-four, it's been eighty-seven thousand, two twenty-one. Our fuel cost has also gone up and we pay for fuel out of that account. Monthly average fuel cost in twenty twenty-three was five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-three cents. This year it's been going up to eight hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. The big costs were the inserts to those vans. The transport van number two was twenty-seven thousand, thirty, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents for that insert. And the other transport van was twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. For a total of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars and five cents. The general repair costs has also gone up for us. Our vendors have told us that they've been going up about ten to fifteen percent just due to inflation. We're hoping to get that down this year. We just purchased, or we're getting off five of our vehicles that we purchased for this year are coming in. So that's going to take some of the older vehicles out of our fleet, which should bring down some of our fire, or some of our costs for maintenance of some of the vehicles. But the majority of the money that was taken was due to the inserts of the van. And that just helps us get the inmates to the places they need to go safely, obviously, after the the deal in Baltimore a few years ago, the Frank Gray incident in the van there. There are certain ways that they want the, the transport vans to be outfitted. So we had, had to have cameras put in there. One of the vans actually had to have AC and heat go to the back because they're all cargo vans. We were able to use an OERT van that's very low mileage, so we only had to purchase one. The one that we decommissioned, that had over two hundred and some thousand miles on it, and we're still using that as a canine van for our blood ham. The other portion of the seventeen thousand dollar request, I think, device, just happened, we're not able to do that. So we should be okay with the sixty thousand, we're open that could get us through. We do pay for all the gas for, for the whole county, all the county vehicles, use a gas pump there at the Sheriff's Office. And we're averaging by around twenty thousand a month for gas, so. But we think this should be able to get us through for the rest of the year. I answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions regarding the transfer of sixty thousand from Allen County Housing to Garage and Motors?
Are those the right accounts to use, Allen County Housing account to Garage Motors? Is that the right account?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have some good news, I just talked to Wabash earlier today and they'll now take some of our inmates, which will make it a closer drive for us to house inmates there.
We, I mean, these have been advertised, not advertised, but, yeah. There's two other transfers though, right?
Yes.
If you want to go talk about.
One, we want to transfer from salaries to part-time salaries, thirty thousand dollars. What we've done with our part-time, we've used our part-time to offset some of the overtime money. So we're actually saving money by using part-timers to come in and cover when we have to have people off sick or we have to have people go stay with inmates at the hospital. Our part-time workers will come in, team members will come in and cover some of those shifts. So that helps us save some money there. But because we've been doing that and the amount of transports that we have to do, we've used more this year than we have in the past. So we're wanting to transfer thirty thousand. The other transfer there was a fifty thousand, we accidentally put it in the wrong account the last last council meeting, we had the wrong number on there. Like I tell our team members, the only people who don't make mistakes are people who don't do anything. So, you know, our ladies up front stay busy, so they got some numbers mixed up in there and they went into the wrong account. You guys have already approved for that transfer to have, so we're just asking to be placed in the correct account for Gil Supplies.
Are there any questions regarding the transfer request from the sheriff? We just need to advertise that seventeen with addition.
He's pulled it.
I mean, next, for next month?
Yeah, he's pulled it.
Yeah, we're hoping we can get through, if we can, then we'll look at maybe doing it.
Okay. Okay, if there's no questions regarding the transfers, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request to transfer as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the transfers within the Sheriff's Department's request, sixty thousand from Allen County Housing Account to Garage and Motors. And then transfer thirty thousand from the salaries accounts to the part-time salaries accounts. And then transfer fifty thousand from office supplies to Gil Supplies. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Leonard.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middleworth.
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. President, what we have, the sheriff up here, can we possibly move I am man, our old business after this, so he can address it while he's here.
That's fine.
I gave you guys, or I think they emailed you a copy of our draft agreement with Jonesboro, for the city of Jonesboro. And we have Mayor Goins here, he wants to come up and answer any questions also. Like I stated before at the previous council meeting, I think it's a win-win-win situation for everybody. We're able to help cover Jonesboro. We still have to have Kyle look at the contract again to make sure that it's okay. But I'd like to have him do that as soon as possible so we can get it to the, to the Commissioners for their approval. So we do have that contract there for those two positions. And they are covering the full salary and benefits for for the two deputies. We don't have included on there yet the attachments for the equipment that they're going to transfer over to. I think there's some vehicles, we're still finalizing some of that. Fortunately, I was sick last week when we met with, with the mayor, so we weren't able to get that finalized, finalized. We plan on doing that, but they are transferring some equipment, so that will save us some money on getting some of the, get some of these, getting those deputies equipped on some items that we have.
We just, I just seen this draft this evening, so. I know we tabled it at the last meeting, I think what I would like to do is.
Preparedness.
Pardon?
Preparedness.
We did, we, we never re-imbued the wheel, right? So there's other agencies that have already done that, so we kind of took the good things out of other agencies agreements, made them our own, and just changed the language. Kyle has already looked at it once, we've made some changes, but we need to have him look at the final draft that we're looking at before we take it to the Commissioners.
Is there a dollar amount in the contract at all?
Yes.
On what page? I like saying just received this evening, so.
It has been more.
Compensation six.
So how, I guess I'm confused as to why this is any different than what we already do as county deputies.
Well, right now, Jonesboro currently has their own police department. And what they're doing is they're wanting to contract with us for us to cover the times that they can't cover. So with that, the citizens of Jonesboro have public safety present in their community during the hours that their officers can't do it. We get, we get sent there a lot anyhow if they don't have coverage. This is just Jonesboro to say, hey, we're willing to put some skin in the game and compensate the county for things that you are already going to do anyhow.
Okay.
I guess we left it, we tabled the item, pending that we was going to discuss with the union, you know. And so do we have an update? You're the chair, committee chairman?
Yeah, at this point, we've not been able to convene a meeting with, with those committees at this point.
I think that with this contract, I think we should have our attorney review as well.
Have you seen this yet, Mr. Garfield?
I have not seen it, this is tonight's, first I've seen it.
I think we should allow the public to speak this evening if there's somebody here that's, you know, from Jonesboro that wants to, to speak on behalf, you know, it's, I guess all of that, the Florida, anybody that wants to speak in favor of this, that way.
I speak?
Yes.
I'm going to the weather too, believe it or not. I'm, I'm named Bob, I'm the mayor of, unfortunately, of Jonesboro. This situation I found, or this contract I found online was already done in a couple of cities. And I looked at it, I called down, and we started talking about it because we need, we have a very hard time keeping officers. I've only been mayor for nine months and I've been on the border works for like seven. Ninety percent of my time is talking about police officers. And this way, we can, it's about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a year we're going to give. And that covers everything from salary, FICA, their health benefits, probably a couple of vehicles. I'm not sure exactly which ones are running right now. But we're also going to keep our police chief and our part-time officers if we can in our reserves. We cannot cover a couple of shifts and we're not asking somebody to drive through town all the time. We just want them to be a resource, excuse me, close enough in emergency. But it's a win for us, and we're being selfish, but, I'm so sorry, I'm really sick, but Dell's. Dell staff went through and looked at contract, I gave them the contract that, I think it was Decal or anyway. They had done this and they, it was a big success, they even called their council members, called their, their mayor, and they said all their problems went away once they went with the county that they were in. And I can see, I can't see anything negative about this, I really can't, because we're going to pay full. And you talk about gas, we're willing to even throw that in, that the officers can pick up some gas from us when they're patrolling. So I'll, I'll entertain any questions why we are doing this, but I just want to tell you that we in Jonesboro are going to support Grant County first because we have nothing over there. We got some things going, got some funds coming in to demolish, demolish, tear down some buildings and stuff. We got some roads, got a new water plant, hopefully we'll be able to do it, but we need to support Grant County first. And we're here to foot the bill, more or less, so. I am so sorry, I'm trying to supply the hell with time, that's what's wrong.
Mayor, quick question, we've had some people comment at the city council meetings, has there been any negative comments or has there been just complete support with the citizens of Jonesboro?
Well, I'm surprised we're not here because we are, our last board meeting, we had, we probably had fifteen or sixteen people come up saying, this is great.
You tried to make them all sad.
Pardon?
You tried to make them all sad.
Well, you're the one hacking. But I just want you guys to realize and everybody here that it is.
here that it is a win for Grant County. I think it's really good that we're even doing, even considering this. I think it's, you know, I just feel like that Dell and his staff are exceptional. I met all their deputies. They're in line with this and they understand that we're just here for the safety of the citizens of Jonesboro. That's all we're here for and we're willing to pay for it. And I'm tired of people jumping. I'm tired of hiring guys and they go to the hospital or they'll go to a security firm. I mean, most of them, most of them go to the hospitals now, which is okay, but we need safety. So we're here at, we're here to ask you guys to consider it and hopefully options are out there that we can get an agreement, a contract. If there's any issues in it, we're willing to talk about it and work with Dell and his staff to make it better for Grant County.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Is there anybody else? I mean, I guess I will open the floor to the public.
Mayor. So I just want to, is the funding mechanism in place for this to be an annual competition? Or is this grant money or something that you have that you put in for year after year?
Well, to be honest with you, we say so that's money, but not paying officers. We're willing to pay upfront. Like if Dell, if you guys decide you want us, we'll cut the check for the 181,000 January 1st or December 1st. And we've already budgeted, we've already approved our budget that this money will be there every year for at least three years. And then each year, me and Dell will probably sit back down, he'll say, hey, I need X amount of money more in the budget and when it's set to go from there.
So I'm unclear. Was it a request for the county to hire two new deputies or utilize the staff that we have to fill in?
Two new deputies, adding to the staff.
The way that will work is we'll put Jonesboro will be part of our district that we patrol. We'll have officers dedicated to patrol that. Even though they're only paying for two, we'll always have an officer patrolling. They'll not only get patrol services from our deputies, they'll get our criminal investigation division for any major crime, homicides, child or less will work those cases. Obviously our canines will be available for them there also. Any specialty unit that we have, ERT, it'll be utilized for them. So really, you know, it's things that we already have and that they would request anyhow. And they're actually saying, hey, we want to have some skin in the game and we want to pay our fair share. And they've come up to do this to make sure we at least, that we have people that can patrol those areas consistently. I think what you'll see is, once you see our guys patrolling, our guys and our gal patrolling that area, I think you're going to see, I think you'll see a big benefit to the citizens of Jonesboro. And we'll put out monthly reports on crime statistics as part of the contract. As they request, you know, how many calls are we taking? What are we doing in Jonesboro? We just want to be, you know, the sheriff's office, we want to be a good partner. We want to be good teammates to the whole community, to the whole county. Like I said, I think it's a win-win, win for us, win for them, and win for the county overall.
So are you fully staffed right now with deputies? I didn't see.
Yes, on the road, we are fully staffed. On the road, we are down two in the jail and we've got some people that are going through the process. And once this is approved, we have two new people that we can hire right away because we just had a hiring process going on. So hiring has to have to, thank the Lord, hasn't been a problem for us. And you know, we just keep asking, send those labors and he does. So we're confident that these two positions will be hired right away. We already have people in line for them.
What would make the difference? Because if you were to hire them directly, you're going to pay them the exact same amount of money that we're going to pay them.
No, we're going to pay more.
But as Jonesboro, why wouldn't we go that way? If you're going to pay more, then why wouldn't you just go ahead and hire the two?
We can't hire anybody. We've advertised.
So I'm saying, if we're going to do it this way, we're going to advertise, the county's going to advertise and hire two full-time deputies to fill this position. We're going to pay them X dollars. It's going to be the same dollar amount that you would put out and hire. How would we hire any of those two any better or any differently than what you would be able to?
Well, nobody wants to work in Jonesboro. You know, it's, I mean, you could, the policeman is a tough job. And you go into a city like Jonesboro, you're going to sit there most of the time and do nothing.
Sheriff is a more attractive job.
And they're always looking for another job. On the other hand, the reputation of Grant County Sheriff's Department is pretty gone-gone good and people want to work for them. And we're not, and we're not asking them to come out and do local orders, you know, like dogs and stuff like that. We're not, we'll do that stuff. We want them just to patrol once in a while for the safety. But I understand your point. So very good point. But Mike, I'll tell you, we have not, we've advertised, I'd say at least three years and we've got nobody. I mean, Gaff City can't even hire anybody. I don't know what's going on. If I was in Van Buren and other towns, I would consider looking into the same thing we're doing for the security of this county.
Sheriff, quick question. I know you're looking to have deputies specifically assigned to Jonesboro, but is there a degree of fungibility here? I mean, those officers, you still have the flexibility to use in other parts of the county and vice versa?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a range of hard work in Jonesboro. They'll still be counted off. They're going to be part of their district. They've even opened up their police department there so they can go do paperwork. Kind of remember like Marion used to have the cop shops, which really is a great idea for it because now that'll put the deputies closer not only to Jonesboro, but to other places in the southern part of the county. If they're doing their paperwork responding from the cop shop there instead of coming from the office. And you know, I just got to say, a lot of agencies are having a hard time hiring and I don't want any credit for our hiring because we pray and ask God for labor and he provides them for us. But we haven't, we haven't had that issue especially on the road. Like I said, as soon as that's approved, we've got, we've got four people in the pool right now that we can hire from that just took the task. In fact, I just talked to someone earlier today that wants to apply for the sheriff's office. So, you know, I give credit to him for bringing people to work for us. And we're just trying to be the best agency we can be. We're trying to change the culture at our office. And, you know, I give him the award for doing that. So we've never had that issue.
One more thing, if you realize that we have, we'll have a full-time person in Jonesboro that we have. So it's not like they're always going to be there. It's kind of like, we'll drive by if they need us and we'll drive through town and it goes. Because when I came up with this and I saw, I realized that Fairmount and that part of the county, they drive through our town all the time. And I keep telling them, hey, stop and drink a cup of coffee. Just kind of talk to us before we thought about doing this because the presence of the law enforcement is a deterrent to crime. I'm sorry, it is. And the more we have out there in the county, I think it's better off. And I can't get anybody to drive through Jonesboro because they must not like the bricks or something. But it's a, it's a win, you guys. And I know, I know when you go, Mr. Glitfield looks at the contracts, he'll think, that's pretty good. You're paying everything, you know. And I'm going to keep reserves there, you know, for the events. And, but I thank you for your time and your consideration. But if you guys can do that, we'd appreciate it. We'll see you later. I'll be back.
All right. Just one more thing, just so you know, we just had the River Rally and we were there the whole time. Our deputies were there, our deputies that were hired by the committee of the River Rally to do security. But we also, for the second year in a row, had a big presence here because of, obviously you have motorcycle, some motorcycle clubs that are work for centers. So we want to, we just want to make sure that they're going to be safe. They deserve safety and security just like any others. So we want to be good team members and good partners with them on that.
Are there any other questions from the members?
Any questions? Some comments I'd like to make when it's appropriate. Just want to reiterate, you know, the good things about this. Legally, it's significant that we are, Jonesboro that is, is having the county draft the contract. That's big. When you turn over the drafting to one party, that's considered a legal advantage and we see it as a gesture of good faith. We're not submitting a contract that we're demanding be signed. We're saying, hey, we're ready to pay the money. Just get us a contract, number one. Number two, this isn't San Diego where people, and you know who I'm talking about, are wanting to defund the police. This is Indiana and Grant County where people want more officers on the road. You're getting that. And you're getting it with somebody else's good faith nickel being offered to pay for it. This would be like, not that my, my town is Elon Musk or has this kind of money, but be like Elon Musk coming to the US military and saying, I'll give you $5 billion to buy fighter jets to use however you want. And the military say, oh, well, you know, we don't, we don't need that money. I can't believe there's any, there'll be any consideration of turning down this offer. And they're willing to pay it upfront in advance and commit to three years. And it's not a grant. It's coming out of the general fund of Jonesboro. I don't know how this could be a better deal. All the things, the boxes it checks off, it's amazing. I think it's worth a try. Let's give it a shot, get a couple more police officers on the road. I mean, again, they'd be doing it anyway. We're, we, the city of Jonesboro and my district want to give you some money for what you're going to do anyway. I wouldn't understand if we didn't serve, if they didn't accept this. I'm past.
Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Mr. Glitfield, what's your recommendation?
Well, I've not seen the contract, so it's hard for me to give you an opinion without having the time to view that. My preference would be, or next year anyway, I don't know what harm it's going to be to wait one more month.
We could do it. They would do it if this starts here if we can.
I could have it certainly ready for next meeting, which would give it time to start December. That's what you need. I just don't like to give legal advice off the coast. There's too much at stake.
And we're just asking Mr. Glitfield to comment on the legality of the contract, correct?
Correct.
That makes sense.
So if we, if we don't bring it, we brought the item out of the table?
You could just have another motion table.
Do you just want to have another motion? It'll table till next month?
Tell you, for legal review.
Okay. Sounds good to me. But I guess what, what's the will of the body?
Okay. I mean, I'd rather, Mr. Glitfield, take a look at it and see.
Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to table a request for legal review. Bring it back next month? Next month?
Sure, yeah.
I guess my question would be, Mr. President, is the commissioners approved the contract, am I correct, on that? And they're going to review it. Mr. Purssinger was going to review it. So we're going to do a double review of the contract?
Well, since it deals with the financial side, I think that probably would be wise.
Yeah, commissioners are responsible for the contracts. We're responsible for it fiscally.
So would you be okay with me going ahead and sending it to, getting it approved by the commissioners so that we can, so we don't have to wait again?
Sure.
And so we can get that part done pending your guys' review of it.
The money's only there if we approve it. So that's no problem.
And then their approval will be pending that you guys approve the position.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'd like to get this, the ball rolling on that, that way we can get that part done.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be sufficient.
Okay.
So I, well, was I, I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott to table the Jonesboro request from the sheriff's department. And a second for Mr. Limming. Is there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call please.
Scott?
Aye.
Living?
Aye.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. What about the school resource?
The next one is, we redid now and got the contract for the part-time position and we added a portion that you wanted on there, that is the grant funding stops, that we will, those positions will go away. But we did have to make some changes to the full-time position because we were going through the old contract. We noticed that Eastbrook wasn't paying enough. So we increased what they're paying on their portion for a full-time SRO position that we currently have there. And then also added the part-time SRO position. And I apologize for getting these up to you late. It's just, you know, when you're sending email and back and forth and everybody's reviewing them, you know, it's out of my hands on how quickly they review them and give them back to us. And I think we got them back late last week, but like I said, I was off sick all last week.
Did I hear you say we were putting the money?
No, no, they weren't paying enough money.
They weren't putting enough, but they will.
Yes, we changed that. So, because they weren't paying the salary or the benefits portion of salaries for the 180 days that the deputy was working. So we made sure that we increased that to properly reflect what they should have been paying. So, and of course, when we did that, then they wanted to have their legal people look at it. So that kind of slowed things down too.
And when is the start of?
We're wanting to start on the 28th. We're wanting to get him started on the 28th. They start fall break, I think, next week. And we would just like to get, he's going to be working in the elementary school. He's just waiting. Once again, we're waiting for your approval for that position. It will be totally paid by Eastbrook and the approval of the county commissioners for the contract.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Glitfield?
Is this the same contract that's been entered into in the past?
Oh, yeah.
With just the addition?
Just the addition of the, just the addition of the money that they hadn't been paying before and the addition of the part that if they no longer are going to fund it, then those positions go away.
I think this one's a little bit different than the other one because the other one's brand new. This is one that's been in 20s. It's just a simple amendment. I'm sure Sheriff Garcia has made sure that dollar amounts are correct and plus the additional language. So, you know, I could rely on what he says. I don't have nearly as big an issue on this one. I can charge on the other.
Yeah, the dollar amount, I've looked at it with Jarvis and Mr. Purssinger also. I've looked at the dollar amounts and it all came up, came out good.
So what would you like us to do, by the law?
I would suggest a salary ordinance amendment to allow the part-time position as an SRO at 2677 an hour. I don't know what you want, but do you think I should stipulate the days, like the contract stays?
I'm hesitant to respond. I'm not aware of the circumstance or what's going on. Obviously you want the salary ordinance to reflect what that position entails. Normally, part-time don't need to be in there specifically, but this may be different.
This is a little different because it's only going to be covered as long as it's funded.
So you may want to note that as part of the, what the ordinance said, just like a footnote that this is a, this position exists as long as the funding exists, something like that?
And he only works 180 days part-time and he won't work during the summer. When school's out, he doesn't work.
And I could put that all in the salary.
Yeah, as long as that's listed, that would specify and make it clear, I would think.
Right.
Is it?
Which I've done that on other situations.
I guess in Davey's answer, is that a question with the union involved there too? Is that already something that's?
Part-timers are not part of the union.
Part-timers are.
So I guess the motion would be to amend the salary ordinance to approve the part-time SRO, LEO person at Eastbrook at the 2677 an hour? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Limming to amend the salary ordinance to approve a part-time position for Eastbrook Schools, an LEO SRO program for a part-time deputy in the amount of 2677 an hour, noting that this is only during the school year and if the grant would run out, then the position would be eliminated. Are there any other questions or comments? Just a question. You mentioned benefits was part of the question, I guess, that they hadn't been paying. Does that 2677 include the benefit piece or is that?
That'd be for the full-time position.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And that's been a place for that.
That makes sense because it wouldn't be for the part-time position. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. makes sense. Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments? Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Limick.
Aye.
Middleford.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item under new business, item F, Grant County IT, Mark Casselli, transfer.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Hello. Like I said, I come to you today for a transfer request. We're looking to transfer funds from that part-time budget you gentlemen graciously gave me in the summertime. We're looking to transfer those funds from there to our equipment budget. The reason for that is to disable a bit of additional funding in there, so that way we have enough funds to purchase the headsets and handsets for the phone system. We're set to go live on it on November 6th, and training is going to be set for the week of the 30th on a day.
So what Mr. Elliott's referring to is the phone system's now going to be through an app on the computer, so to speak, right?
Correct. And there will be some physical desk phones. They're basically relegated to, they call them common areas. So like in the jail where there's not really designated person, like on the first floor, the second floor, in the processing area. There's just like little areas like that where you have to have a physical phone. But the phones that we replace on the way out are, they're pretty much exactly the same.
Is there any questions or comments from the members?
Charlie, in the letter, it says, "Part-time budget for salaries again."
Correct, yeah. So I spoke with Angie on it because I, I guess I sent the letter before I spoke with her on it, and I talked with her, and she was, I think you were saying it would be better to take it from the part-time?
Okay.
So I kind of shot the gun on it when I sent the letter.
As long as we're clear, we're coming out.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
If there's no other questions or comments, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Limick to approve a transfer within the Grant County IT Department. Transfer amount is $9,225.74 from the part-time to his equipment budget, one item. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Limick.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middleford.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, if you want to ask him a completely unrelated question. So as you gentlemen are aware, the public defender's purse equipment to allow public defenders only to talk with inmates at the jail, it would be very helpful and probably takes in the process of getting people to court if attorneys on private cases have the same ability to do that. Mr. Elliott says the equipment was purchased can only be used by public defenders. Would it be possible to implement a system where private attorneys could do that too? Because what private, what you run into is it's difficult to get in and out of the jail. It could take, you know, take an hour in, an hour out. Luckily for me, it doesn't, because I know Jason, I call him, but I hear other attorneys complain, whereas when it's a public defender client, you simply call the jail, they set up the time, and there's no waiting. So I think that would immensely help movement of cases if on private cases attorneys could do that also.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't know, is that, I mean, attorney, but is that something that would be considered or for funding? Or it's not, I don't think it's that much money, frankly.
I mean, how could we just use the same system?
According to Bruce, you can.
Now, I, Mark explained a little about that. Yeah, so it was purchased probably four or five years ago. It was right, right around the time COVID hit, and my understanding, the public defender's got a grant. And I think part of that stipulation was that device that they bought that funds with would only be used, or could only be used by the public defenders. I know Community Corrections, they have like a similar deal with, they have a few devices in the jail as well. And it's kind of, I don't know if it's a similar situation to them. I've never heard them say no, but I've also never heard anybody asked to use their equipment before. So that was my understanding of it, because I think there was a situation one time where all the rooms were getting used and the public defender one was free, and we asked them if it could be used, and they gave us similar, some similar response.
I know I've had conversations with Mr. Elliott about it as well, about eight or nine months ago, and it kind of blows my mind that it couldn't be dual-use, right?
Right.
But no, I think if that's something that you, maybe you could bring back to the council as far as what our options would be.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be in your bailiwick, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, it seems silly that we would have to have something separate. I mean, if it's a grant, taxpayer dollars, it's just coming from a private corporation, taxpayer dollars. Public defenders, as they, as they state, they want to uphold the rights of it. They're just supposed to, they should, and all it should, but...
Right.
Why are we creating this separation to make it difficult for an attorney to work with those clients?
Yeah. No, I, I mean, I, I just, I didn't understand either, but I also, I mean, with the grant funding and stuff, I'm not too, you know, into all that lingo and stuff.
Would it come from grant or public defender counsel?
Uh, that I'm not sure. I thought it was a grant, but I could be...
I can see a grant.
I did.
It didn't come through.
It didn't come through that.
Okay.
It may have came through that.
That's why I think he says that, because I think they paid for it.
Yeah, because you'd have to reach out to at least...
Like supplemental PD? I don't think about supplemental PD. I don't know where it came from. I just know he paid for it. He says he paid for it, which is crazy, because I do public defender work, and then I use it for my private account.
That's what I was thinking. I was sitting here thinking, why does it matter? You, you do both.
And, you know, all the attorneys run into that.
Sure.
It does seem strange that it wouldn't have come through the audit office, the transaction. It must have been something totally outside of our...
Yeah, I don't know.
...financial system.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that it just was not through a grant.
The transaction would have come through our system somehow.
Yeah, and that's very possible. I just, I don't have that information with me to find out.
Yeah, and that was probably just speaking. I just know, like, you know, they're like, hey, you know, we have access to these funds, you know, to buy this equipment, so that way we can still, you know, do, you know, sessions with, you know, people in the jail.
Because it'd be interesting to see what the source of that was. Was it a private grant? Was it a state grant? Was it a federal grant? You know, what was it? If it was a grant, we'd have, like Angie would say, we'd have it through our grant transactions.
I would have to know who the vendor was.
Yeah.
I think I didn't purchase.
It would have been through, um, Persilio. Yeah, it would have been through Persilio. Yeah. It was, it was like 20, it happened to be 2019, 2020, somewhere in there, I believe. I'm pretty sure they did it because of COVID.
And maybe there'd be...
So it was. So it was software, uh, video. Software is hardware. So basically, they bought a Cisco DX-80 system, and they bought a tamper-proof enclosure.
Video?
Yes. I think that came from Lord Austin there. I think that his, he was doing all that courthouse remodeling.
That would replace the...
Eleven? Yeah, it's a whole, yeah, it's a whole separate system.
Okay.
What those have out there.
But from the jail perspective, they love it because you don't have people coming in and out.
Sure.
And, you know, you could, and then they're not, they're just bringing them into a room on their floor. It's so much easier for everyone. It's just illogical that it can be...
I agree. Surely we can get that fixed.
Yeah, and it really did not cost, I mean, we're talking a few thousand dollars versus potential traffic. I mean...
Yeah, and maybe there's something we could work out, Bruce, where you just pay a, you know, pay something upfront to get, you know, buy half of whatever it was, or I don't know.
It's not, obviously, it's not using it. They might use it a couple hours a day.
Would, would private attorney pay a service, I don't know what you would call it, but a fee annually to be able to utilize the equipment or not?
I don't know why you would have that.
You wouldn't need to?
I doubt that would, I just don't think. It's, it's just, the tracking of the money would be more than...
Yes. So there's unlimited users that could be utilizing the system, right? I mean, it's not like a license to where it only, we only have 14 people that can use it.
Well, yeah, so we, basically, you give access to an account, and then that WebEx account can dial into that room. And if they have their own WebEx account, they can dial it from that as well. So basically, it's, it uses SIP. So it looks, it looks like a email address, but it's got like a little extension number at the front of it, that it's at, you know, Grant County WebEx. And you just dial that in the program, and then it calls. I know Chris Cunningham and I, we're currently getting pricing on equipment for the courthouse for a grant, and, you know, maybe that could be, you know, part of that discussion too, maybe get equipment for additional rooms in the jail. I know that space in the jail is limited, so I'd have to work with Sheriff and Jason Camery to figure out where that equipment can go.
If Jason wants it done, because he's asked me, why is this not happening?
Yeah.
Because it'll save them a lot of time.
Yeah.
I appreciate that comment, and maybe you can get back with us on that. Let's do it more or not, or, you know, what, what kind of dollar figure we're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anything else as far as business goes?
You know, it's ironic. I looked down in this fund balance report, and the first thing I looked at was supplemental public defender services in their balance. So they clearly have plenty in there to go for.
Are there any committee reports? I will note that at the last commissioners meeting, they did finalize the rest of the ARPA dollars. We will advertise that for next meeting.
I was going to say something when Ron was here. He did rescind that $700,000 for the detention center, but we also have one that was done prior to this that will also need to be rescinded. I don't know how you want to address that.
Okay, we'll discuss that later. I think the idea was to put the $700,000 combined in. So, but whatever we have to do to make the paperwork correct. So, yeah, that is, we'll probably be at the next council meeting, which will be the regular meeting Wednesday, November the 20th. Anybody else? You want to open to public comment? If anybody would like to speak from the public, come to the podium and state your name and your address. Allow three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rick Gaines, Centered Justice Trustee, so I just wanted to update you on what's happening in the cemetery since I spoke months ago. So, a week ago, Wednesday, I had two officials from the Attorney General's Office come. One was the inspector, and one was the Deputy Attorney General. They came in response to my email, asking for a government office to finally step up and answer, because I had spoken with a DNR who then referred me to prosecutor's office, who said they couldn't do an inspection, they, and they were overwhelmed. So they referred me to the police department, who then referred me to the sheriff's department, who then referred me to the state police. I spoke with a general counsel at this state secretary of state's office, who referred me back to the prosecutor's office because they couldn't help me. And so I had already submitted some inspections from four complaints that I had received from the Attorney General's Office that said, "Your office is better suited to investigate these complaints and respond to us what your findings are." But I didn't get an answer. So I sent a detailed email and just said, "I need somebody to say, 'We'll step up to the plate and help you.'" So they did come. We spent an hour and 45 minutes driving around the cemetery. They were very frustrated, very upset at the conditions. They, they stated that that was the worst cemetery condition of a cemetery that was owned by somebody. And they were very upset. So I found out from them that the Indiana State Board of Cemetery and Funeral Services cannot convey the cemetery to me. They cannot convey it to me, but they are going to submit to the board their finding with astronomical fines, because he is out of compliance for many issues at the, at the cemetery and has been now for the third year in a row. So they are going to get that paperwork submitted and ready for me because my attorney, and I didn't have an attorney, but I had to get one because Brian Jeffries got an attorney, and I submitted a court claim on September 23rd. The attorneys have their initial conference with Judge Meeks in Superior Court Two on the 28th of this month. And so I will find out what's happening. So I just wanted to update you. I am moving forward. I've not stopped. We're still pushing, and I still, I still, I even got an email today from a citizen just thanking me because she had read that I had received the $300,000 from the city, and she just wanted to thank me because they, they, she visited last month for the first time in six months. She came in from out of town, and she was just so discouraged and so upset, and then to read that I'm trying. So I just wanted to update you on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I say our next meet, regular meetings, Wednesday, November the 20th. Meeting adjourned.